Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I am Rick Vest, Chair of the Lancaster County Board. To my left is Vice Chair Kristi Yocum, and to her left Commissioner Matt Schulte. To my right is Commissioner Sean Flowerday. Will you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please begin the meeting.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. The first item is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move approval. Second.
Motion second to approve any discussion. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Abstain.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is the claims, approval of the claims processed through July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. And I'll note there's an amendment to include the most recent payroll.
I move approval of the claims, including payroll.
Second.
Motion second to approve claims, including the payroll. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is Item Two B, approval of the claims, including billing for goods and services beyond the ninety-day time period provided in Nebraska by statute twenty-three dash one thirty-five for Anderson Ford Lincoln Mercury dated July third, two thousand and twenty-five for a total of one thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-one cents. Anderson Ford Mercury dated July ninth, two thousand and twenty-five for a total of two thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-four cents. And Teal Geotech Incorporated dated July ninth, two thousand and twenty-five for a total of seven hundred and twelve dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve Item Two B. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is a special presentation, recognition of Lieutenant Jane Voberill, County Corrections, for thirty years of service.
Good morning, Brad Johnson, Director, Lancaster County Department of Corrections. So, we are here to celebrate. I'd said this a million times. And got through it fine, so. Celebrate Jane's retirement and recognize her thirty years of service to our department and community. Jane began her employment with us in nineteen ninety-four. To put that into perspective, I was a new sergeant working on second shift when I was assigned to her as a field training officer. She claims to have been my first. That experience must have been impactful to her, because I sure don't remember back that far. That experi- uh, let's see. I do know at that time, I was a lot skinnier. And actually, I had hair on the top of my head. You still got yours. Jane, I can truly say the world isn't fair, considering I never envisioned one where you retired first. I'm not sure how that happened. Jane eventually promoted to Sergeant and then Lieutenant. She worked every shift and facility over the years and did a rotation in our training department as well. She's been a key member of my leadership team and a valued contributor. One of the things that makes our department special is that we have so much history and experience together. I know I speak for this team when I say it's hard to imagine moving forward without her. She has served with passion and honor. I've been so fortunate to have had her as a part of my life for all these years. Congratulations, and you now have more time to spoil your granddaughter.
Please go. Lieutenant, it is my honor to present you with this board, honoring your service to this community and this county. I really genuinely want to thank you for all of the years of dedicated community service here.
Thank you very much.
I've got a million memories over the last thirty years and have seen so many people come and go. And it has been a true honor to work with Brad, Ken, and Rick and the people that came. I've made so many friends, long-lasting relationships. And I just can't say enough good about the people that work at the ADF. Their mission statement. They all live by it. And I am proud to have been a part of it. Thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Please, Commissioners. Well, I want to give the Commissioners a chance before you go on. I know you're ready to start your retirement. And I don't blame you, but...
I just, before the meeting, Brad and I were chatting about how exciting it is when someone has worked a full career and gets to that age and that, that place financially where they can retire, and I just celebrate that with you. So many people are scared to take that jump, and it probably has been a little scary for you, but I am so glad that you're taking it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What a legacy you leave, and you're the work that you've done for the county and for the people of Nebraska. And it's clear by the number of your peers, your colleagues that are here, how much they wanted to come and be a part of honoring you today. So, again, thank you for your service. This is not an easy position to stay in for thirty years, I'm sure. You've saw, as you said, you have a lot of memories, I'm sure, both good and bad, right?
Yes.
But thank you for, for your service. Really, really appreciate it. Yeah, and enjoy that retirement.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Sean, to add? I mean...
I just want to say thank you for your service again.
Thank you very much.
Lieutenant, just, just an honor to have you here with us this morning. As Sean said so well, we just can't thank you enough. And I think your presence here this morning and the words that we heard talk about the community that exists in that facility, and nothing is better than bill- being a positive part, building a great community in your work environment. Sounds like you've been a key part of that, and, and thank you for whipping Brad into shape.
It's happened a time or two, yes.
They need your number, just in case things go ahead, haven't we? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would agree in a moment.
Next item is the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of Item Four A, amendments to the following county contracts. C dash twenty dash zero one three nine with Thompson Reuters and the City of Lincoln for computerized legal research for the county attorney and public defender to allocate billing of services separately as laid out in the amendment. C dash twenty-three dash zero two nine five with Aramark Correctional Services LLC to provide food service for corrections facilities. C dash twenty-four dash zero eight two two with Saint Monica's Behavioral Health Services for the Lancaster County Pre-Trial Release Program. C dash twenty-four dash zero eight nine two with Everybody Gets a Chance for the Everybody Gets a Chance program to extend the contract term. Item Four B, contract, grant contract with Centerpoint for the Community Support Day Rehabilitation, Medication Management, and Outpatient Therapy Program in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and seventeen cents. For C, received and placed on file the following reports, Records Management and County Attorney.
Commissioners?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve Item Four. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will move Item Number Five. We will hold executive session following Item R on new business, so...
Item Six, New Business, Six A, proclaiming July twentieth through twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five as National Pre-Trial Probation and Parole Supervision Week. And I will read the proclamation. In the matter of proclaiming the week of July twentieth through twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, whereas communities nationwide are recognizing the importance of pre-trial probation and parole supervision during July, and whereas community corrections professionals uphold the law with dignity, supervise adult and juvenile offenders, provide services and referrals, and collaborate with community agencies, and whereas community corrections professionals promote prevention, intervention, advocacy, and restorative justice, supporting and protecting victims, and advocating for positive community change, now therefore the, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the week of July twentieth through twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five as National Pre-Trial Probation and Parole Supervision Week in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, and all persons, organizations, and governmental entities in our community are encouraged to honor these community corrections professionals and to recognize their achievements.
Thank you. Mr. Curry, it's an honor to have you here this morning, and I thought you might want to have a few words here about National Probation and Parole Supervision Week?
Yes, thank you. Wasn't prepared to speak, but, no, I mean, thank you for recognizing it. Lots of people, you know, community corrections, parole, probation, problem-solving courts, you know, they put a lot of hard work in, so it's a, it's great that we can recognize them for all the work they do. Lots of people don't know what they do behind the scenes, you know? It's not just a eight-to-four job. People are working the weekends, holidays, you know, a lot of, a lot of stuff, you know, that most people in the community don't recognize they do, and, you know, they put family things sometimes are secondary, you know, they miss a lot of important family events because they have to keep the community safe. So, it's, it's nice to honor them for a week.
All, all about helping individuals stay on a path that'll be more healthy and more productive for them and for our community as well.
Agreed. You know, they work really hard to get people into treatment, and we're very fortunate in Lancaster County with all the avail- all the treatment services available, so, I agree a hundred percent, you know, they work endlessly to get people, you know, where they need to be in line.
Kind of unsung heroes, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve Item A. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Six B, a special designated license from the Meadowlark Music Festival for an event at Prairie Pines Nature Preserve on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'm hoping someone's here to tell us about this event.
Yes, someone. My name is Clay Bradley, and I'm a member of the board, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Just tell, Mr. Bradley, just tell us a little bit about the Meadowlark Music Festival. I know it's not a new event, but just tell us what about it.
This is our twenty-fifth season, and I've been on the board all twenty-five years. And so, the format is we have three or four concerts. The upcoming season is next weekend, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh. And one of the concerts we'll do is at Prairie Pines Nature Center. I don't know if you're familiar with it, Hundred and Twelfth and Holdridge. And we do an outdoor concert there. And at our outdoor concerts, we generally have wine and beer available. Sometimes we have a vendor take care of it, and sometimes we do it ourselves. And in this particular case, we like to do it ourselves. And we never had any issues. It's a pretty mellow crowd, so...
Yeah, yeah, you've never made the newspapers about what's happening out there as a result of wine and beer, so I think that's, that's a record to keep up.
And certainly a longstanding event in our community. I would move approval.
Second.
We're honored to have you do this, sir, thank you. Motion second to approve, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and hope to see you there.
The next item is Item Six C, a special designated license from Systostrous Shrine Holding Corporation for an outside event on August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Hello there, Henry Schultz, Treasures Systostrous Shrine. This is an event that actually goes back to before the pandemic. It's sponsored by one of our units, the Iron Nobles. They're getting back in the swing, so they want to start this again. It is an outdoor, they've got a country western band, the stage will be on the north side of the building, funds that they may produce, the use for both fraternal and charitable usages, and you can see on the permit, it's not our first rodeo.
You guys do so many positive events for our community. Thank you, sir.
And it's good to see you again. I would move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You never know what uniform I'm gonna be wearing, do you? Thank you.
Item Six D, setting the salary for Jessica Murphy and Steve Schmidt, Deputy County Attorneys, in the amount of fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents per hour as Attorney Twos effective July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five for temporary assignments.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Turner, Chief Deputy Lancaster County Attorney, here this morning for Mr. Condon. Asking for approval, over the course of about six weeks, we're gonna have said goodbye to about five of our attorneys, a little more than ten percent. We had a retirement, we have an attorney that's moving out of state as their spouse is gonna be going to graduate school in North Carolina, and then a few other attorneys that have taken other opportunities. So with that, usually we can absorb and move around a number of openings as we get new people onboard, which we do have plans. Four new hires have been made, but they're gonna be kind of staggered as a few of them need to take the bar exam later this month, and they wouldn't be actually sworn in until September. So to fill that gap, one of the dockets has about six hundred open cases. We really can't do without somebody in that spot, and two of our former deputies have agreed to come back part-time. They're both currently professors at the Nebraska College of Law, so we'd like to bring them back. It'll be short-term, likely thirty days, but no more than the end of September. We've ran this plan past H.R. and Dennis Meyer. I think we're good to go all around, so asking your approval of that.
Well, it's really honorable of them to come back and fill in on, on a short-term basis. That's a great thing.
Absolutely.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve any discussion. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chris.
Item Six E, a grant contract with the Lincoln Sports Foundation in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars from the Visitors Improvement Fund.
Not seeing anyone coming forward.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Six F, a grant contract with the Lincoln Children's Museum in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars from the Visitors Improvement Fund.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Six G, a grant contract with the Lux Center for the Arts in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand, three hundred dollars from the Visitors Improvement Fund.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Six H, a grant contract with Star City BMX in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars from the Visitors Improvement Fund.
Move approval of this one as well.
And second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Six I, an agreement with Barry Dunn, McNeil, and Parker LLC to conduct an assessment of the county's human resources services and evaluate the feasibility of consolidating these services into a centralized county agency. The cost to county is one hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars plus expenses not to exceed nine thousand, nine, five hundred dollars.
All right, good morning, Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Officer. This contract here is, is kind of what we've been talking about recently. It's kind of the, the next step in the process. We, we've talked about doing an assessment to kind of see where we're at. Does it still make sense? Where do we go from here? This contract will just kind of start that process. It's, it's, it's almost probably gonna be a five-to-six-month process. We'll see the results, and then we'll make any type of decisions from there.
And the, plus expenses not to exceed nine thousand, five hundred, is that travel? Is that...
Yeah, that's, that's what that is.
Yeah. I would move approval.
Second.
And Dennis, now, just to lay the foundation here, we did put this out through our usual bidding process.
We did go out, we reached out to about six different, six or seven different companies, and, yeah, and so we went through the process like we, we normally would.
Yeah, because we've had a lot of discussion about this, and I know we have to work with who comes to us and is willing to do the job, so. Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Six J, a license renewal application with the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for operation of the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Six K, an agreement with the Regional Behavioral Health Authority for the provision of emergency protective custody services by the Mental Health Crisis Center.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve Item K. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item Six L, a release of easement located in Circe First Edition, an administrative division, subdivision in Waverly, Lancaster County, Nebraska, as shown in Exhibit A.
Good morning, John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is a release of any interest the county has in an easement. Circe Edition is located just north of Waverly. It was originally platted into two lots back in two thousand and twenty-three, and now they've replatted the two lots. Um, they basically moved the lot line to the east about 300 feet, so this is just releasing the previous easement shown on the plot.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six M, recommendations from the Joint Budget Committee for 2025-2026 Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund Funding.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, direct-
Didn't bring Barney up, so you brought in a stuff.
Yes. Uh, we in Human Services are very supportive of the county's, um, fundraiser for, uh, ending hunger. And so, um, yeah, we are, these are our donation to that, so if people want to purchase these, uh, to help end hunger, yes. Barney, you can take home your own Barney the dog. Anyways, I am Sarah Hoyle, I'm the director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln in Lancaster County. And these are recommendations put forth. Again, um, what we do here is have an internal, uh, committee of stakeholders review this. Uh, they recommend all of these grant applications then to the overall joint budget committee and then the joint budget committee puts just the recommendations forward to you all. So that's how this process works. Any questions?
Approval of item, item M?
Second.
Motion second to approve, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six N, a recommendation from the Joint Budget Committee for 2025-2026 Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund Funding for the Indian Center.
And this particular funding for the Indian Center, we're excited in that, uh, this will be a youth program back at the Indian Center. It's been many years, uh, so we're excited to partner with them again in this capacity.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve, please call the roll.
Yocum?
I will abstain on this as my husband serves on the board, but I definitely am supportive.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six O, recommendation from the Joint Budget Committee for 2025-2026 Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund Funding for the Mediation Center.
And everything we do with youth in our office is restorative, so we could not do it without having the Mediation Center as a partner. They help facilitate our atjuency circles as well as our youth dialogues when there's been a victim of a crime that, um, wishes to meet with the youth.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve, and this is the Mediation Center, correct? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Item six P, a recommendation from the Joint Budget Committee for 2025-2026 Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund Funding for Ravel Mill.
Ravel Mill is an agency that serves a bulk of our youth. Um, our youth love going there. It's in close proximity to where a lot of them live. This, this amount is a little larger than other amounts, but when we break down the number of youth served compared to, um, and the price per youth, it comes out about equivalently to everybody else. It's just they serve such a large number of youth.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
I'll abstain as my wife is on the board.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six Q, recommendation from the Joint Budget Committee for 2025-2026 Juvenile Justice Prevention Fund Funding for Youth for Christ.
Uh, Youth for Christ, for this program, serves our, um, youth who are parents. It's one of the only, it is the only program in Lincoln that, um, picks up kids that are, are trying to parent their kids and takes them and, um, works with them and helps provide guidance and mentorship to these youths.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
I'm an abstainer. I work at Youth for Christ. This doesn't benefit me, but I do work there.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. And item?
But before Sarah gets away, or Sarah, is this part of yours? No, this is not. Before you get away, what do we, do we have a name for these Barney look-alikes or?
They're just, you can take home your own Barney for only $25. All proceeds going to End Hunger in Lancaster County.
Put that one up, I'll buy that one. So if you'll put it up, my, my Barney up here.
I should have brought 20 of these.
I'll buy that one.
Thank you. And the director of the food bank, um, one of our partners in ending hunger, uh, she will be here in about a half hour if you want to see her, so. Thank you.
So much, sir. All right, Madam Clerk.
Item six R, recommendation from the Personal Policy Board to amend Human Resources Policy Bulletin, Military Family Leave.
Approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we'll return to item five, the executive session, potential litigation which is imminent as evidenced by communication of a claim or threat of litigation to or by the public body and legal advice.
I move that we go into executive session for potential litigation, which is imminent as evidenced by communication of a claim or a threat of litigation to or by the public body and legal advice and to protect the public interest at 9:29 a.m.
Second.
Motion second to go into executive session, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are now in executive session for the purpose of potential litigation which is imminent as evidenced by a communication-
Out of executive session at ten oh one AM.
Second.
Motion, second to come out of executive session, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll return to item six S, a settlement agreement to resolve a property dispute with New Generation Properties LLC concerning property generally located at two twenty South Seventeenth Street in Lincoln and authorizing the county board chair to sign documents necessary to carry out the terms of the settlement.
That, that item will be held.
Motion for that or just hold it?
The next item is item seven, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes and that time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the chair.
Any members of the public wishing to speak, please come forward. Any members of the public wishing to speak about items related to the county board business? Seeing none, will move forward.
Item eight, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at eight thirty AM in room one twelve of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at nine o'clock AM in room one twelve of the county city building. County commissioners can be reached at four zero two four four one seven four four seven or commish@lancaster NE dot GOV. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meetings are streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L N K TV apps are also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. And the last item is adjournment.
Will we adjourn?
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. We'll now open the land. We are adjourned. We'll now open the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, please begin the meeting.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot GOV. Printing options are available upon request. The first item is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty-five.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion, second to approve any discussion, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of additions and deductions.
Second.
Motion, second to approve, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, the assessor inspection and review report of damaged real property, Form four twenty-five A.
Good morning, commissioners. Brian Grimm with Lancaster County Assessor Register of Deeds. For these properties, they filed for the Form four twenty-five, which is destroyed property or damaged property, excuse me. The first one on the list, parcel number eleven dash twelve dash four hundred dash zero zero nine dash zero zero zero, that one was actually filed prior to January first. The filings are for from January first through July fifteenth, I believe. It was caught early enough in the year that we already looked at the property. We did an inspection and then we removed the building that was damaged. So it's already been taken care of in a roundabout way without going through the four twenty-five. It would have been, we would have had to deny that because of the date of when it was filed, but it's been taken care of as we speak anyway. The next one on the list is zero four dash thirteen dash three hundred dash zero zero four dash zero zero zero. That one went out, we inspected the property, the property was completely demolished. We would recommend removing the improvement value on that property. Twenty-three dash twenty-one dash three hundred.
First ass question, I'm just trying to, I'm having trouble following the form that's included here. So it says column one, column whatever, it says assessor recommended reassessment, three hundred and eighteen, five hundred. Then there's a reassessment improvement, says nothing, and then the recommended still says three eighteen, five hundred.
That's the land value.
That's just the land.
Right, because the improvements were destroyed, but the land was not.
Okay, so previously, there would have been a column, something.
That would have had an improvement value, correct.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Twenty-three dash twenty-one dash three hundred dash zero zero seven dash zero zero zero. That one is another one that the building was demolished. We would recommend a land only valuation of one hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred for tax year twenty twenty-five.
Also, Brian, would you mind just mentioning the names of the people? Because I know a couple of these people are here today.
Oh, sure.
So the, the last one we just talked about was for John Mosher and Eunice. The one you're talking about right now is for Mark and Diana Jacobson.
Jacobson, correct.
Okay.
Sixteen dash zero six dash one three nine dash zero one six dash zero zero zero, Casey Stevenson. That one is another one that the building was demolished upon review and inspection of the property. Would recommend a land only valuation of eighty-five thousand on that property. Seventeen dash eighteen dash two hundred dash zero zero four dash zero zero zero, Devon Ostrander. That one has its commercial property, has six buildings on it. Building number six was damaged, so building, the five buildings on the improvement are still there, but the building number six was completely removed. And we would recommend a value of one thousand one hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars for tax year twenty twenty-five. Zero four dash zero seven dash one hundred dash zero zero nine dash zero zero zero, David Noel. That one is another one that the building was completely demolished. Recommend a land only valuation of one hundred and twenty-four thousand for tax year twenty twenty-five.
All right. Any questions for Brian, commissioners? Thank you, Brian.
Mm-hmm.
Now, Matt, you said there are some, are there any members, what, what we're hearing from Brian is that four, one, two, three, four, five properties, four properties, there's no value on any additions or improvements, just the land appraisal. One property with Darren Ostrander, there is still some buildings remaining, but it has been reduced by the damage of one. And then Mr. Frederick was already dealt with earlier, so that's where we're at. There are, if there are members of the public, we want, we welcome any comments or input that you would want to add at this time, if there's anything more we need to know.
John, you and I talked earlier, did you want to say something? You're more than welcome to, you don't have to, but you can if you'd like to.
Right, no pressure here.
Yes, John.
Well, sir, you have to, if you're going to comment, you have to come up to the microphone and give us your name.
Moser John Charles, sixty-three hundred West Holdridge. That's where the property got burned to the ground. And that, I just wanted to say, there was a lot of equipment and stuff in the, in the garage and in the house. And of course, I'm, I'm a, I'm an original forder from way back. My folks, that was my folks' house, and I bought it through, through there. But anyway, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say, I didn't know if there was who, who I'd go to to find out, find out any reconciliation or whatever they should call that, you know, for, because I, I know the, I, I don't know the fellow that burned it down, but I know, I, I know his name and where he's at, but he had, he had sold a property in the paper for over two hundred thousand. And I was just kind of curious about trying to get some, some of that back. And I, I know that we have to have an attorney probably, but I didn't know if, because he's still in, his court hearing hasn't came up yet, but that's about all I wanted to.
I, I did get a chance to talk to John beforehand, and I agree, that's probably a legal proceeding that you need to talk with an attorney or work with, those sort of things. What we're dealing with today is the property value.
Oh, yeah.
And so it looks to me like the property value previously was about five hundred and fifty thousand. And what he's proposing to us is that we knock off the, knock the value down to three hundred and eighteen, something like that, because of the loss of the house, which would mean you'd pay less property taxes this year. So that's really what we're considering today, is lowering your property taxes because of the damage you had. And Brian's recommending that, generally when Brian recommends it, it sounds like the board's very supportive. So we're going to do our part to at least make sure you don't have to pay property taxes on a house that doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, it doesn't, there isn't nothing there but ashes.
That's so unfortunate.
Of course, there's some metal, but anyway, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Sorry about taking so much time.
Oh, no, you're totally fine.
Thank you.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
We do have someone else approaching, it looks like. Come on up, sir.
Morning. Devin Ostrander, I just wanted to get the value again for my land, the property, I think you said, is it one hundred and twenty-six?
Uh, the land value is two hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred.
Two hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred, perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Ostrander. All right, anyone else? If not, then I would entertain a motion. I would move approval of the.
So there's another item we can't, we can't set out separate.
Item four.
Well, then I'll do it on item four. Oh, I see. Well, that's, okay, my bad, Sean. All right, then, madam clerk, I guess we're done with item three, it appears to be.
Item four, report of destroyed real property from the following: Jeff Frederick, John Mosher, and Eunice Cernavlovic, Devon Ostrander, Mark and Diana Jacobson, Casey Stevenson, and Dave Noel.
Uh, now, I would, I would move that we accept the recommendations from the assessor's office.
Second.
Motion, second to accept the report, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is item five, notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes for the following: Prairie Home Builders Incorporated, Artith J. Corver Revocable Trust, Calvin and Jody Sterns, and six five hundred South Fifty-Sixth LLC.
Okay, on the first one, Prairie Home Builders, parcel number ten dash thirty-one dash three oh two dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero. This one, we had an improvement on that parcel, a partial improvement that did not belong. It is a vacant lot. That's why we would recommend going from the two hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred to one hundred forty-three thousand three hundred. That's the vacant lot for three, I think it's around three acres on that parcel. The second one, Artith J. Corver Revocable Trust, twenty dash twenty-six dash two hundred dash zero zero five dash zero zero zero. This property is a little bit unique. It's got a, an agreement with Building and Safety that says it cannot be a primary source of residence, so we changed that from a single-family dwelling to a guest cottage. The resulting value change in that would be a one million two hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred to one million one hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred. The next two parcels, zero six thirty-five dash one oh one dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero, and zero six dash thirty-five dash one oh one dash zero zero two dash zero zero zero. Those part, or those two, we had the improvement on the wrong parcel. So it was pulled from one parcel, put on the other one. The amounts aren't identical, because at one point, it was a partial at about, I'm just throwing this number out there, about fifty percent, the next time we went out was sixty percent. That's why, you'll see, it's not a dollar for dollar on removing that from one parcel onto the other one. Uh, so on the first parcel, excuse me, zero six dash thirty-five dash one zero one dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero, that one would recommend going from the lot value of thirty thousand seven hundred to the improved value of five hundred twenty-six thousand seven hundred. Parcel zero six dash thirty-five dash zero, excuse me, one zero one dash zero zero two dash zero zero zero, would recommend on that one, going from eight hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred thousand, or excuse me, eight hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred to four hundred forty-three thousand four hundred dollars, and that is vacant land that's acreage. Parcel number sixteen dash sixteen dash three two zero dash zero zero nine dash zero zero zero, Alex Lane, or excuse me, um, that one is another one that the building was demoed. We did not catch that in time. So we would be changing that from four hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred to a lot value of one hundred twenty thousand four hundred. That would be our recommendations for those.
Any questions, commissioners? I think this one we approve on item number five. Am I reading that correctly? I would entertain a motion.
I'd move approval of the valuation changes. Is that the right wording?
Yep.
Second.
Motion, second to approve the valuation changes, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes for twenty twenty-five for Ronald Emerson and Christine Barons, Diane Moore, David S. Horak and Jerry L. Myers, Robert K. Stickney, Eldon K. and Linda A. Jones, Alan G. and Janice Culver, Gregory and Paula Baker, Russell and Christie Cromberg, Chad, Jerry, and Melanie Sue Springer, Rhonda R. Keaton, Tyler and Hannah Hernandez, Erin and Rachel Ramirez, LRC Incorporated, Creek Carrier Corporation, and Clara Burnett.
And these were all new applications this year, that we've approved them for green belt application as they're complying with all the state statutes to, in order to be able to receive the green belt.
Good. Any questions?
I move to approve the notice of assessed valuation changes.
Second.
Motion, second to approve, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, waivers for twenty twenty-five four fifty-one exemption applications on real and personal property. Applications received after the deadline per Nebraska by statute seventy-seven dash two oh two dot, dot oh one are required to have a waiver granted by the Lancaster County Board of Equalization before the county assessor can consider the applications.
Jacob Van Pelt, Lancaster County Assessor's Office. As she mentioned, these, these are the waivers that were mailed in with the applications that were not timely filed. They were all received after December thirty-first, but prior to June thirtieth. The date we received them is on all of the sheets included. In order for the assessor's office to consider these applications, the board must grant the approval of the waivers. If the waivers are approved, we will have our official recommendations for these late exemptions at the next BOE meeting. Again, we're not taking action on the approval or denial of the exemption, just if the waiver will be granted to allow us to consider the applications.
I would move approval then.
Second. These all look like they're applicants that had everything in order, they just missed some deadlines. Is that fair assessment?
Correct.
Okay.
And you just, you know, you all need time to, just to confirm that it's all in order, so, very good. We have a motion, a second to approve, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight, are the public hearings. The first is the notice of proposed change in exemption status for Region Five Foundation.
We will now open the public hearing.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name.
Jacob Van Pelt, Lancaster County Assessor's Office. On this particular one, the exemption was granted for Region Five. They sold the property on June the nineteenth to a private individual, so we are recommending removing the exemption, because it is now owned by a private individual and not the Region Five organization.
All right.
And one additional note, on the application itself, there is a typo on the parcel ID. It currently reads seventeen nineteen two two one zero zero nine zero zero zero. It should be seventeen twenty-nine two two one zero zero nine zero zero zero. Everything else on the paper is correct, it's just the twenty-nine rather than the nineteen.
Thank you, Jacob. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on item A, the proposed change in exemption status for this property? Any members of the public? I see none. We'll move on, madam clerk. Thank you.
Then the next public hearing is the motor vehicle taxes exemption application for Grace Chapel Lincoln. Lincoln.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on item B regarding a motor vehicle tax exemption application? Seeing none, we'll move forward.
Item nine, public hearing-
Close the public hearing.
Public hearing action items. After a public hearing has been conducted and closed, action on the item that was the subject of the public hearing will be scheduled as a separate public hearing action item. Because the public hearing has been conducted and closed on that item, no further testimony or evidence will be accepted or admitted during the public hearing action item portion of the agenda. Item 9A, notice of proposed change in exemption status.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve the change, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 9B, the motor vehicle tax exemption application.
I move approval of this application.
Second.
Motion second to approve, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 10 is public comment.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on items related to the Board of Equalization business items not on the agenda, please come forward. I see none, we'll close public comment.
Item 11 is adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yoakam?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone. Brian, do you have one minute? I have-